May I please have a motion to approve the public minutes from the September 14th board meeting?
Motion to approve the minutes from the regular board minutes from September 14th, 2022.
Second.
Motion from Wendy, second by Stephen. Are there any corrections or comments about the public meeting, the public minutes from September 14th?
It's working.
I think Zoom is working now, by the way. Sorry.
Okay. Well, let's keep going until Joanne comes back. Corrections or comments on the minutes from September 14th?
We're told that Zoom is working now.
Okay, thank you. Are we hearing none? All in favor? Raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Eight to zero. Adopted. We'll move on to, do we have any non-public minutes? No, just public minutes. Okay, I understand the Zoom is now working. We will reopen public comment. Are anyone in the Zoom universe who wishes to?
I'm not seeing any raised hands. And I did get a note besides Brooke letting us know that the Zoom is working. So I don't see any public comment from the virtual.
Okay. Public comment is closed again. From the superintendent, are there nominations, renominations, resignations to be?
I don't think we said that there were any, but.
There's nothing in the packet.
Okay. Ten notes.
Okay, thank you. Student report.
Um, so, so, so as you guys know, we have the homecoming dance, which hasn't happened in 15 years. We have sold 373 tickets at our school. So we made, I think the last count was $3,090.
Wow.
To raise money for fundraising, grants, and other school funded events. We have all the supplies for homecoming, which is nice. So we have like the carpet, the lights, and like the drinks and the tables, which is nice because homecoming is this Saturday, October 1st. And, um, there's another thing. Our day of work is coming up sometime next week. Day of work is this time for LHS students, usually upperclassmen, to go out in the community and help around and, I guess, like pay back to like all the elders in our community, all the adults, what they've done for us, so that we can help them. And also is a fundraising event where they give a small fee to get their entry in, and then we go out and help them. And that money goes towards grants at like our science programs and our theater program and our sports programs. And going on to theater, the Addams Family production is continuing their practices, their plays, and their stage runs, I think. That's what it's called. And that's going well. But other than that, I think that is it. Oh, yeah. And the bonfire last week was well attended, it was fun, and it was also safe. So yes, that is about it.
I was going to ask you about the bonfire. Thank you for, thank you for mentioning it. Any questions?
No.
Thanks very much. Okay, we're now going to move to item 9A, which are the construction updates. Do we have the architects on the line, Joanne?
We do. Hello, Preston. And I'm going to ask Paul to unmute. Hello, Paul, can you hear us and unmute your mic? So Paul, we can't hear you. Now we can.
Says I'm muted.
There you go. Hi, Preston, how are you?
Can any, can anyone hear this?
No.
No.
You can hear you okay or?
Because we are working with CATV that should be pushing it out, and you're hearing it out of my mic.
Well, the problem is that right now we can't hear.
Can you say hello? Hey, Preston, can you say hello?
Hello. Good evening, everyone.
Still can't get it through the system.
No.
Wait a second.
This is important, so I ask everyone to just bear with us.
I'm going to text Tyler. I don't know.
Hi, just email. Do you want to text him as well in case he's not on email? He said he was around the corner and could stop him, but that was difficult. I don't know if it's our system or CATV.
Yeah, the microphone goes to that box on the table, which we opened from the box into the computer.
Anybody have some creative problem solving ideas?
If we all had our computer.
Speaker into your computer, external speaker, blasted in the room. Does anyone have Bluetooth speaker?
Because you're hearing it from my device and the microphone.
Can I disable the heroes?
Right, but it's coming out of my device, not through the speakers.
I wonder if we use that speaker plugged into our computer. What about that speaker plugged into your computer? It might not be transmittable, but at least we'd be able to hear it in this room.
Well, we try. Right, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
We could share.
Because everyone on Zoom can hear it.
Right.
If we all log into Zoom, we'll all hear it on our own machine. Then they might not all be perfectly synced, but.
Echo, echo.
If we, yeah, if we knew, or, yeah, that's a good question.
Let's try it out. Why is this so loud?
The other option is we all go on Zoom. Whoever has.
That's what we were going to say.
You just said that?
Yeah.
I brought my computer. I'm not signed into Zoom, but. Is there a link somewhere?
It's in the agenda. It's in the agenda. Let's go.
Yeah, it's going first.
I was ready to be here a couple minutes. You wind us up.
We can do that.
He said that won't work because CATV's computers aren't running as now.
All right, let's, let's keep moving then while this communications issue is being, is being worked on. Superintendent is busy. Joanne, do you want to do your update?
I am. Be happy to do it.
Okay.
Get right to the right section.
Okay, so we're on 8A now.
Okay. Can everybody in the room hear me? Okay? Okay. So under school safety, I've been in communication with the Lebanon City Manager, the Police Department, the SRO, and the LMS Principal regarding the supervision of the crosswalk on Route 4. Renovation projects, Tim and I attend the meetings. I sent the monthly renovation update to the board, and the building permit is now approved by the city. Been in communication with the Architect Construction Management Company and the City of Lev to coordinate different steps of the project. For board and committee work, PNN negotiation meetings with LSS, provided members information, attended in person and virtual meetings. For policy, I reviewed policies and prepared the agenda for the October meeting that I'll be sending out. FNF accreted the agenda. We invited Paul and Preston to discuss the renovation projects. Education Committee, I participated in the meeting, and I did follow up with Lebanon High School staff about providing SAT and survey information to members in October. For area, I drafted the area agenda. The date will be October 18th at 6:00 PM at the Grantham Village School. And I do believe we now have the minutes from February 2022. HACTC, Mary and I attended the meeting. They talked about the start of school and enrollment. Some of the other things I've been working on is meeting with our social worker, Miranda Collins, working with Karen and Tim regarding special education matters. Facilitated a presentation by Attorney Jim O'Shaughnessy to the staff regarding divisive concepts. Visited Hanover Street, the high school, and the middle school. Provided information to staff about the start of school and sent the superintendent letter out to the community. I've met with Bonnie and Katie to review the Director of ECIA applications. We have scheduled interviews to be next Thursday. I met with the Lebanon Police Department to discuss the revisions of the MOU. It is now being reviewed by our attorney. I met with the SAU office staff regarding a personnel matter. I've met with De'owano to schedule a meeting with SALT members in November. Facilitated a meeting with our administrative assistants and then followed up with Peter Merritt regarding oversight and management of student data systems and New Hampshire reporting. We're finding that a huge amount of time is being spent by our administrative assistants because there's such high expectations for all the student information and reporting and everything like that. Communicated with the Superintendent of Hartford regarding the 23-24 calendar. And I met with Denise Matthews, PLDC Chair, to talk about the upcoming PD days. I'll also be meeting with Bonnie and Denise to talk about the mentoring program, making sure that that continues on. Any questions I can answer? Stephen?
Just curious on if there's any progress that you can report with the crosswalk safety? You said you're working on it, but is there anything?
So the solution is to have the SRO be present and/or an administrator or a para if the SRO is absent for the main two times that students are doing the crosswalk. I asked the city if more signage is needed. They said that there should not be additional signage to be added to the, to the location. And I did mention to them in advance that I have some concerns about the snowbanks because when they get so high, I want to make sure that there's eyes out there for our students. That's never been a good turn, and snowbanks have always had an increased visibility issue. So I just wanted to push that out there early on.
Great, thanks.
Joanne? One thing that I noticed is the flashing lights for the school zone, those don't always flash at the school zone time. And it may be that in one direction they are, in the other direction they're not. It can vary.
I think that that's done with technology. Remember Pete, that Dana used to work with the city and set those every year? And I wonder if we didn't do that this year?
Well, I, I'd say we, the report I got is that we did do them this year, but maybe we missed one or something's not right. So yeah, there's a box on there that we have a, basically hook our computer up to, so we'll, we'll check on that.
Yeah, if you can look that up.
And they did have a big sign, like one of those big signs where they give, yeah. And they, it did say, you know, you're entering the school zone or that kind of thing. Are they keeping that there?
They didn't talk about moving anything. I just asked if there could be additional. And I mentioned that if you're heading out toward Enfield, they kind of have one of those on the hill that lets you know your speed, and it helps you to be like, oh, right, I didn't realize.
Right.
I didn't get a response to that, but they did, did get a response that they reviewed the signage that's there and don't think any additional signage is needed. It's always been an issue because that's a state highway. And those of you who have been on the board for a long time, they had asked to get that speed limit down to like 20 or 30 for that strip, but because it was a state highway, they couldn't do that. So that's part of the problem with that section of the road.
On the same topic, when does coverage start in the morning, morning that we have someone out there?
What I've been hearing from parents is I got a few thank you notes for responding quickly and that they have seen an adult or Greg out there in time for students crossing and coming in and leaving. So that's what I've heard. I don't go out and actually check it, but that's what.
It would be good to know that with some specificity so that if parents are concerned about that, that they know that there will be coverage starting at?
Sure.
7:15, 7, whatever time it is, just so they can plan accordingly.
And same with the ending time.
Yeah.
Yep, I'd be happy to look into it.
Yeah, so all the kids coming from sports and stuff, they can do it on their own.
I wonder if it would be useful to get our Senator or reps to work on the, since this is a state highway. I mean, they seem to be able to get a reduced speed limit on Route 4 in, in Enfield. So, okay. Anything else from the superintendent's report questions? Lil?
I wanted to ask how, you said you visited HSS, LHS, and LMS. I just wanted to ask how the visit to LMS went, what's happening in LMS, given the new year?
So I went and had meetings and then just walked around a bit. I didn't get to every class. Two comments that really stood out in my mind is that people have said that they have had a good start. And one person made a point of saying that they had a really good conversation with the administrative team, and although there wasn't everything that they asked for, they really felt heard and appreciated. So I heard that comment. I haven't had a chance to go back and hit some of the other classrooms. I find that I like to change my schedule around at different times because students might be at recess or teachers have team meetings and I don't get to see everybody all the time.
Anything else for Joanne? Joanne, do you have any plans to bring Miranda in to, to talk to the board about what's on, what's on her plate?
I could ask her, sure.
Think that'd be useful.
Sorry, I have a follow-up to Dick's question. Along those same lines, I thought it was really useful when, sorry, can you hear me now? Along those same lines, I thought it was really useful when Ian came last meeting just to give us an update of what, to start of the year in his building. I think that'd be helpful to hear from all of the principals about the start of the year in their buildings soon.
Sure.
Anything else for Joanne? Okay, thank you. That was time for the BA report, but he's helping troubleshoot the communication problems. Tim, do you want to talk to us about, I think you have, you want to kick off the budget discussion?
Absolutely. So the date on this was for the last board meeting, but we just bumped to the board meeting. I recognize that today's not the 14th. So this is chapter one. You'll see these in your budget binders that come out in November. And every, you know, I think all we know, but just, just for the record, I guess, every board meeting, we talk a little bit more about different budgeting issues, and this one, we try to look backwards a little bit, take your questions and see if I can find answers or provide answers now. And then there'll be different things we talk about the next few weeks. So the first slide, I did talk about last week or last board meeting, the unassigned fund balance, that's the balance that, that's the report we give to the, to the state of how much, for lack of a, but this is imprecise language, but money left over that'll reduce your taxes is 1.267. So we report that to the state in a state. So once they do the computations, how much local revenue we need to raise, they'll subtract 1.2 million dollars from it. That's how it lowers your taxes. That comes from $978,000 in unexpendanted appropriations and $288,000 in excess revenue. I mentioned last time that the, unlike the, unlike last year's conversation, it had to do with impact fees, this, this is really a function of we, we set our budget based on previous year's projection from the state of free and reduced lunch and stuff like that. So we set the budget, and then the legislature, the state authorized basically retaining pre-pandemic free and reduced lunch numbers. And so that gave every district more money, but it flows back through. So we set the budget, we set the budget based on a lower number before they made that change. So that flows back through to offset taxes. As a reminder, warrant article number two, that's the budget warrant article. Actually, I should say three. This year it was warrant article number three because number two was the bond. The budget warrant article assumed a million dollars to offset taxes. So when we say, when we said to the public, if you approve this budget, it's going to be a 50 cent raise on your taxes, that, that assumes, at least it has assumed in the last several years, that we had a million dollars to send back. So if you don't have a million dollars to send back, two things happen. One, you can't fund capital reserve stuff, and two, the tax rate is higher than you promised. So when we say there's a million dollars left, that's really a goal we, you know, it's kind of the floor because otherwise the voters aren't going to be happy with you for having higher tax rate than you said. So we able to hit the $1 million, and because we hit the $1 million, we then can fund the, the capital reserve project for the board, for, for buildings that the board has already authorized to go to the Mount Leb project. And we reserved the $750,000 for the Mount Leb project. So we met all the financial goals that the board had, had set out last spring. The next slide is a small snapshot of some of the unexpendant funds, and I can go in more detail or look up more detail if they have any questions, but didn't want the slide to get too busy. So $172,000 of the $371,000 left in wages, $172,000 was regarded to teachers, and that's really a function of we hire versus what we budget. We try to budget mid-range, master's step six. So if we hire someone at a bachelor's step one, for example, that's like a $25,000 savings over master's six. So that's all rolls up like that. We did not, I can't think of any teaching positions that went vacant, went empty. So when you think of money left over, it's not because we didn't fill a position or of any significance. If there was a vacancy, I don't, I can't think of one. Pairs were a little negative. So pairs, sometimes we go, we're under on, on paraprofessionals because we budget, we budget in the fall for what we have in our, our needs in a district at the moment. And a lot of times, many times, we'll have to add paraprofessionals after the budget is approved for especially for special ed needs. And that stuff's not budgeted. So every year it's a bit of, you know, hasn't, it works out okay. But as you might imagine, if we have 10 pairs in a building and we have to add three more, we just, we have to put it in the budget. So that's how you get in about negatives sometimes. Custodians and transportation, both of the biggest, as you can see, those are wages. So we're missing like five custodians and we're missing two full-time bus drivers and we used to have a lot more part-time bus drivers. So that leads to some, some savings. Benefits, biggest one is health and dental. So again, we budget for what people's plans are right now, but they can change them after the budget time. So if you have a family plan now and you go to a two-person plan, that's savings to the budget. Likewise, if we had a new position, I budget for a family, a family cost, which is the worst possible scenario as far as cost goes. So a lot of times we'll budget a new position for a, you know, and a budget of family, and they might need a two-person or a single. So that's how you get some savings with that. Tuition savings were, that was pretty good, $32,000. It's pretty much right on tuition across different, there's basically three functional areas. Old term called vocational, regular ed, or special ed. And that's pretty good across those three functional areas. The next is a chart I've been doing for a number of years, just showing the unassigned fund balance from 2007 until today. In 2020, in 2021, you see those, I mentioned this last year, but just to remind you, in 2020, I reported to you the end of the full bar when I did this report at the end of 2020. Was about, I think, 1.3, but the auditors always reserve the right to, so they adjusted, and they said 300,000 of that was an expenditure they wanted to move to the next year, or they wanted me to, they made me take that hit then for an accounting thing. It was just a matter of when the bills, actually checks got cashed over the fiscal year. So I reported to you 1.3, it was actually a million dollars that went, reported to the state after the auditors adjusted it. And that pushed that extra, that 370,000 just moved to the next year. So the big thing in 2021 was extra revenue from impact fees and that accounting adjustment. And not to be too boring, but I did talk about that last year. But I figured someone was going to ask about the different colors. And then in 2021, 2022, you see the, the comparison of the fund balance. So trying to stay lower to a million dollars than we, as you can see back in the prior early part of the 2010s, it was much higher. And then the last slide is just our budget process is underway. Right now, the principals are gathering information from their staff about what their needs are going to be next year. I have some meetings scheduled about facilities. I'm working internally on personnel costs for next year. So the principals have meetings with Joanne the week of October 18 to 20. Then the following week, we need to talk about, we need to start talking about tonight. Usually I send you an email, but the week of the 24th to the 28th is when we try to meet with the board reps for the different buildings. There is a New Hampshire School Administrative Association best operations conference that week that I need to go to for some of my upkeep of my own license. But anyway, in that week, I'm going to try to hit a target where you guys meet with, with Joanna, myself, and others. So just look for an email. I'll ask you what days you're available, what times, and I'll try to match everything up. It's kind of a little bit of a puzzle. Next week, next time, we're going to talk about the FIP and a little bit about, but how the budgeting looks and our knowns and unknowns. We do have, you're like, what does that mean? You know, healthcare increases and unknown that I'll have to budget. We will, we do already do have the new New Hampshire retirement rates, which are actually oddly lower. So that'll be a little bit of a help. And finally, what do, what would the board like to know about the budget proposal process? I'm always looking for information. We are looking for information and what sort of guidelines you might want to give us. And, you know, again, I'm not expecting, I'm not sure it's appropriate to just start throwing things out, but that's the kind of thing I'd like to have in your head that you can talk to us about, hey, Tim, I haven't seen this or whatever, so we can start preparing. And I'll ask for your questions.
No questions?
I have a couple.
Let me just, I'm just scrolling back up through your slides here. Just to clarify, on your, the bottom of your first page, you say reserve 750,000 for the MLS project. That's from Capital Reserve, correct?
No, that is unexpend, if we did not reserve that, your fund balance would have been a lot bigger.
Okay, so that's from?
That's from operational funds.
That's from operating, okay. That's from operating, okay.
So we did an encumbrance to Ekman Construction for 750,000.
Okay, good.
And then the cap reserve, when it's time to pull that money out, will be everything that's in there minus the track, plus the $600,000 that I'm putting in there.
Right, okay, okay. On the, on the unexpended fund slide, this roughly quarter of a million on health dental under, under benefits. Do you have a, any sense for what percentage that is of, of what we budgeted? Just roughly, I mean, I'm looking.
Well, I don't have the dental figure in my head, but we spend about $6 million in healthcare. So what's that percentage? I don't know. And then you have to add dental into it, which is pretty cheap. I don't have to get you the number on that.
I ask because when we're, when we're trying to manage unexpended funds, one of the things that always pops up is, is our over-budgeting for, for benefits. And I understand we need to do that. And that's why I'm, I'm asking, just trying to get a handle.
Looks like 3.7.
How much we're over-budgeting. And maybe it's not terrible. I mean, a quarter of a million out of 6 million plus maybe isn't too bad.
It's like 3.7%.
It's a 24th.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, well, that's, I guess that's, that's encouraging. And a question that-
I feel like we're doing, we're trying to do a little better. So I, one thing Xavier has brought to the table, my HR coordinator, is that he has, just has a real good eye. So instead of, so I, I have a rentainer spreadsheet of everybody and their choices. And I try to keep it up all year, but as you might imagine, we have 360 employees. So my point is, is that right now, he's actually providing the first set of eyes and then I'll be the second set of eyes. And last year was the budget we're in now is really the first year he's done that. So if, to the extent that there might be someone who is actually two-person and I missed it, you know, another set of eyes, hopefully we'll catch that. And we'll, proof's in the pudding. But that's one thing I'm encouraged by is it's another set of eyes on this, on this list of people. So.
Okay, well, that's, that's all for the better.
Yeah.
On your bar chart, just to make sure I understand what you were saying about 2020 and 2021, that, that white bar on the top of 2020, that, that's the, the auditor thing, correct? And that's-
Correct.
And that moved over to 2021?
Correct.
Okay, so that green bar on 2021, about half of that roughly, little less than half of that, is that white bar from?
Correct.
From 2020?
And you'll remember that the rest of it, of, you know, in bounding, there's a little bit of other income and stuff, but the rest of the majority, only like 95% of the rest of it is the impact fees, which were $260,000, I think. And we had budgeted like 10,000.
And for what it's worth, we're not, we're not doing too badly. I mean, considering how, you know, the terrible uncertainties we had in 2020 and 2021 with COVID and all that. I mean, this is, this is not too bad. The only other thing I had was you were asking for specific information the board would like to have prior to November 19th. I think the next item on the agenda, we're talking about the construction projects, is going to shed some light on what the board is interested in between, between now and then. And also just think, just to point out, next board meeting, we're going to be talking about facilities improvement projects as part of the budget process. And although we, we know that we're not going to have excess money to funnel into facilities improvements that we'd like to, I think it's just for the board as a whole, I, I think it would be, it'd be really good if everyone could, could look at the FIP and, and that's posted on the website, if you have any trouble accessing it. And just let's in our own mind do some prioritization of, of projects that we'd like to see done. Whether we have money to do it or not, I think it's a useful, a useful exercise to keep this updated. And that's why we, we moved the FIP discussion earlier in the year to the first part of the budget process. So we can do that. So just to kind of move that discussion next week forward, it'd be good if we could just take a look at that. Yeah, Wendy?
Is there identification in that FIP of the things that we should expect to see in the budget?
Well, only if we put it there.
So the FIP is structured so it says year by year planned expenditures. So I'm not going to say everything in there will definitely be in there, but that's one thing we look at, you know. And if there's a, I'm making this up, say there's a roof in there for this year and it turns out the roof is okay, we're not going to put it in the budget, even if it was projected to be in there for this year. So.
But, but are you going to go through that list in, because I think-
Yes.
In discussions that we've had before, the concern is, is that the things that need to be, like, we're not putting them in the budget. And so are the things that we know absolutely need to be done, are, are our highest priority going to show up in the budget?
And I, I think that they, I think they can, they are going to. And I think, I would say they actually have most of our higher priority, but lower cost. I mean, some of the stuff in the FIP is super expensive. A new roof is at, you know, a quarter of a million dollars. That one, we're going to have a discussion about. But replacing, a good example is the classroom, the classroom renovations. That's in the FIP and that's been in the budget every year for, I don't know, half, five years now.
Is the FIP highlighted in such a way that when we, if we go and look at it before the next meeting, that we could easily identify those things you're anticipating to be, show up in the budget already?
It can be.
We, we've had it prioritized in the past.
Right. I mean, it's not highlighted, but it's prioritized from-
Right. But there's some easy way for us to be like, okay, we're, we're expecting to see that in the budget. Do we have thoughts about that? Or are there things on that list that we have listed as priorities that we would also like to, or something?
I'll, I'll look at the way it's structured. I'm not going to do major changes to it, but it's a way to more easily highlight the things we're going to be talking about.
Okay.
Let's certainly do that.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, anything else for Tim? Thank you. Have our Zoom gremlins gone away?
Hi, Paul and Preston, can you hear us?
We can hear you. Can you hear us?
Yeah. Terrific. Just so you know, what is in the board packet includes the current budget for the high school and Hanover Street. Page behind it includes the older budget from September 2021, November 2021. And we also-
If you mute your computer, will it eliminate that?
My computer is muted. I'll try something else. Let's try that. That's better.
Yeah, that's not good.
Can we still hear Paul?
Can Paul and Preston still hear me with that muted?
Yes.
Okay.
Super.
And we also have a large copy of the design that has in blue sections that we had talked about to decrease costs, as well as the four design 3D concepts. So if you are referencing any of those things, please just let the board know so that they're literally on the right page. We'd appreciate it if you would start off with an update about the Mount Lev project, please.
Sure. Joanne, would you like me to go?
Sure, thank you.
Yeah, okay. So we've, we've been seeing some really good progress. Yeah, most of you who have been by the school recently have noticed a lot of changes. The link of us today, we placed the concrete slab on grade in the new addition, which is a great milestone for us. And we also just recently paved the balance of the parking lot. So now we should have just all the binder painted down, which is going to give us a great work and surface as we go into the winter months, allows us to keep the job site clean, prevent snow and ice, which is always, always our goal this time of year. The next big phase is going to be masonry. That will probably be starting in a couple of weeks. You'll start to see the masons mobilizing and walls going up. So we're, we're happy with the progress thus far. And it's been great working with Kitty and her team at Mount Lev. And looking forward to making some good progress this winter, too.
Any questions from the board about Mount Lev before we talk about Hanover Street and the high school?
Maybe just a very general timeframe, just to kind of get it out there because I'm, I'm not sure when it's going to be all done.
Yep, we are targeting completing this spring. There are some interior renovations that also need to be completed. As you're probably aware, the nursing area is kind of the main focus there. We're going to try to complete those renovations around the schedule of the school. Probably looking at doing some of that around February vacation week. But that will just sort of depend on the time that works best at the school.
Any other questions? Seeing none? Let's talk about the second renovation project. That would be Hanover Street and the high school. And would either one of you want to kind of give an update on the steps taken so far and where you are in the process?
Yeah, I can start with that. So we began work on this soon after the March vote, so in April. First, one of the first steps was to go through the building, measure what was there. Because, you know, it's a big building, we didn't have very good drawings of existing conditions. So we spent days and days, days measuring the building, every door, window, everything in the building, developing existing conditions drawings of that, which you see in the package that you were sent. And then at the same time, getting a survey done at the site so that we know exactly what's out there in terms of utilities, underground utilities, overhead utilities, existing building footprint, driveways, all that playground fencing. So it took, you know, it's a big project just to get existing conditions that are accurate for the whole site and building. So it was the first couple of months after the vote. And then we began the process of designing the building at a schematic level in order to get feedback from Ekman Construction on pricing. Because during this whole time from last winter until now, as I'm sure you're aware, pricing on everything having to do with construction in particular has really increased dramatically. And that's, you know, if you can find people to do the work, it's almost have to beg people to give you a price to do work right now. So it's, it's very challenging, obviously. And then of course, results in higher costs. In addition to the higher costs of just materials, materials itself, so steel, lumber, roofing, insulation, everything you talked about, prices are, are dramatically. So we knew we'd have to look at budget before we got very far into design because we probably have to make some adjustments. So we, we went through that process, did the first pass of the design, talked to the principals about space that they need, made sure we were on track with that. And then gave those drawings to Ekman and they went out and got pricing for that. And Preston can probably fill you on the details of, of what they did with that and challenges with that. But the upshot is, they came back with the first pass at prices, price estimate. And it was about double what we thought it would be, what we thought it would be as of about a year and a half ago when we budgeted this. Going, after seeing what happened with Mount Lev, we kind of had a sense that would be the case. So in the meantime, we were also planning on, okay, where could we pull back to get key elements of this project built and still allow flexibility and looking forward to do the other parts whenever, as money allows, this project or in the future. So we focused mostly on the parts of the building that would be really hard to build later on, or when we bid this project in the winter, this upcoming winter, if we discover we have money left over, which would be great, what can we add back in at that point? And looking at it from a construction standpoint and a school standpoint and a budget standpoint, everybody involved pretty much universally agreed that it would make sense to build the three additions in as lean a sense as possible to get those built, get the square footage for the schools so they'll have the space. And then we can go back and do the renovations primarily in Hanover Street as money allows. So that's the approach we've gone forward with, which is designing three additions. So the entrance of the high school, the very small student center area, and the band room as one addition. Then the classroom addition at Hanover Street is a second addition. And then the cafeteria and kitchen at Hanover Street is a third addition. So we're actually pretty happy, given the first round of pricing, that we were able to get all of those three pieces included within the budget that we had from the, from the bond. So we're actually fairly relieved that we could do all of that. And then the renovations are, for the most part, postponed until we see what the bids are. We see if there's money available. And if there's money available, then we'll buy off whichever piece of that we think we can afford. So that's, that's kind of the second phase of this whole thing, once we get bids back. But the nice thing is that, once you have the square footage of the classrooms primarily at Hanover Street, that gives you flexibility then to do the renovations. If we didn't have a new classroom in Hanover Street, it would be very hard to move people out of spaces in order to renovate them later on. So it makes a lot of sense in terms of logistics and functionality within the school to build the classrooms. Then they'll have a little bit of breathing room in that school so they can move kids into those classrooms, which will free up a little bit of space in other areas if we have the opportunity to do renovations later on. So we can decide that. And in the middle of this project, we'll see where the budget lands, see what funding's available. And then we can adjust the scope of the renovations as, as everybody determines this, this, you know, best priority list for doing that. Preston, do you want to say a little bit about pricing and what you're seeing out there?
Yeah, I think you summarized it really well. It is definitely an unprecedented time right now in our industry. And I think we're seeing it in projects across the state right now. Other than the Mount Lev and its school, we have two other school projects that are currently under construction. We're seeing a lot of the same, you know, very high pricing. And it's really in function of material costs, which have gone up dramatically. And labor costs, of course, have continued to climb. And as you pointed out, Paul, subcontractors are just so darn busy, where you have to beg and plead to get the bid projects. And that has delayed, had an effect as well. So the, the goal, I think, really looking forward is to be putting this project, the high school and Hanover Street school project out to bid in January. That is the best time of the year to bid because subcontractors are looking to line up their schedules for the summer and early spring. So I think it's important for us to come with some consensus around the plan. And the plan that Paul has outlined is, is workable, it's feasible within the budget that you have available. But it's going to be important for us to move forward with that pricing, the final bidding to the subcontractor community in depth where so we can get the most interest and hopefully the best pricing. And then, as Paul said, if, if there is funding still available, we would love to be able to buy off some renovations as well in some areas. And, you know, the project itself, our hope would be to stop art in sort of the May, maybe early June timeframe. We know that there's some utilities that need to be moved or some of the additions are planned. So getting that worked out over the summer when students aren't on campus is really important. And bidding early will allow us to get on schedules with, you know, site work contractors and, and other early trades. So that'll be important. The, the project is probably 16 to 18 months. So as Paul mentioned, we'll have the benefit of two summers. So if, you know, the budget is good and we are on track and have additional funds available, it's, it's very likely that we'd be able to figure out how to add some of that scope to the project and complete those renovations during the second summer. But that is all, of course, you know, contingent on the pricing. And we have included in this latest round of estimating, some contingencies for cost escalation, which we think is prudent, given that we've just seen costs continuing to increase week by week, month by month.
Are you ready for some questions?
Sure.
I'm sure there are questions. Who's, who wants to go first?
I can start us off.
Go ahead, Wendy.
So.
Pull your microphone close, please.
Sorry. So my first question is, we're looking at budget numbers for the different pieces, the different components dated January 2022 and November 2021. My question is, I wish we had the updated, so when you say that the costs have increased dramatically, what's really hard, the current pricing that you gave us for the project was like 12 million, something. But it's hard for me to decipher how much of that, if we're doing three spaces, how much is the cafeteria, how much is the auditorium, how much is the new addition? And with that, the pieces that we have decided not to do, I have nothing to help me understand how much those spaces would have also cost.
So would you like me to just sort of give you a little bit of an overview? I'd love-
A little overview of what some of the costs of those different components are, or...
Yes, that would be extremely helpful.
Could I interrupt real quick? I'm wondering if it would be a good idea, if those of us who have kind of similar questions, maybe we throw them all out, and then he could answer them? What do you think, Dick? Just in terms of...
Sure. Why don't you, yeah, I don't want to get it, I don't want it to be too diffuse, I mean, Wendy's question was pretty specific.
Sure. Ben, go ahead.
Yeah, well, we have, we have quite a bit of time here.
Audio's working, so, fire away. Well, I'd like me to jump in on that one, of course, if there's additional questions, I'll try to answer them best again. I think it's important to just note, too, that this is an early conceptual estimate, what we're working on, essentially the plan, and you've seen with some, you know, some blowups of those areas. The plan that you have, the major components are colored in green. This looks green on my printout, so we kind of, so I suppose, maybe starting kind of at the, you know, 11 o'clock, and work around the plan in that fashion. So, on the high school side of things, the bands and entry addition, which is, which is shown there in green, that component is about $2.6 million. On it, so, I don't have anything site work or other, you know, fuses and so forth, but just the, you know, what we call the cost of the work. And, if you can continue around, there really aren't any major renovations in the high school, that's really the main component of the high school part. So transitioning over to the Hanover Street School, the kitchen and cafeteria addition, which, of course, you see next to the existing gym, that's about $3 million. Again, the cost of the work for that project. And then, transitioning down to the floor classroom addition, that one is estimated at about two and a quarter, 2.2, 3 million. And then, in addition to that, we do have some money allocated for firewall improvements throughout the building. If you see on that plan, those dashed orange lines, those represent firewalls, which is essentially a fire separation, to break a large building up into smaller buildings. So there's some improvements that are required for, for those firewalls, which is about $280,000. And then, in addition to that, we also have some minor improvements at the Hanover Street School entrance. The fishbowl is being removed and replaced with entry doors, and, you know, some HVAC and lighting changes, and ceiling changes, and so forth, in that area specifically. And that's about $68,000 that's been allocated for that. So those are the major components. Site work is sort of separate from that. We have estimated about $1 million in site work for those three additions. And, so that makes up the major components of the project that, you know, are currently included in the budget.
Lil, and then, and then we'll get back to Kristen.
Preston, that was Preston, right? I have a follow-up question. Do you have the numbers for the blue sections that we decided not to, that have been decided not to be included?
Yes, so, our initial estimate that we did included the blue sections as well. And I can do a similar, walk around the plan.
That'd be great.
If that'd be helpful.
Yes, that'd be great.
Okay, sure. So, I guess maybe we'll start, we'll start over at the stage addition, which was at the kitchen and cafeteria addition to the Hanover Street School. So that stage, which you can see in blue there, is not currently included in the budget, that was about 1.23 million. The library addition, and library renovations, was a little under 600,000. Special services, which included multiple areas, was about $450,000. And then, the administration renovation at the Hanover Street School was about $560,000. And then, the last, well, I guess there's actually two more components. The nurse office was 120,000, that was an expansion into the adjacent space and reconfiguration. And then, the new stair, which is not in the current plan at the Hanover Street School, was 265,000. I think I got all the blue areas.
And wasn't the, the original, sorry. Wasn't the original band room a different footprint?
Yes, the original band room was, or, I can actually see that move there, so, in our initial estimate, we broke that up into a few different components. Let me refer to that. So, we had just over $1 million in the new secured entry, which was, was larger, and kind of a two-story space. The student center, which was sort of the next component that you would walk into from the entry, again, larger than what's currently in the plan, was, let's see, make sure I'm connecting these lines correctly. All right, I think I may have, let's go, all right, let me make sure that that's right. I'm just trying to read these. So, student center was actually a little over a million. The new secured entry and reconfiguration, 2.2 million. And the music addition piece was a little over 2.9 million. So...
Thank you.
Can I just ask one clarification?
Yeah, if it's a clarification, yeah, then I want to get to Kristen.
So, in the, the yellow or green space for the high school, do we have a breakdown for the student center entry and the music space? So you said two, you said...
Yeah, we combined that. The way we looked at it, and there was some discussion between that man and Meredith's office, unfortunately, that band, you really can't do that, that band room, without having that connector piece, which is the, you know, the scaled-down student center. So, we, we didn't, we didn't split it up when we estimated it.
So we don't have any idea what, if we just wanted to do the entry and the student center, we don't know what that cost would be?
The student band room, is that what you're saying?
If we, if we didn't, if we decided not to do the actual band music space, but we wanted to do the entry and the student center space, how much would that be?
Yeah, I don't have a separate breakout for that. That's something that our estimators could work on, if that, you know, is, is something that the school board would like. We understood that having the band room was a high priority, so I guess we didn't anticipate that at first.
Well, if I can just jump in for a minute here, you just mentioned that we're taking out about 2.2 million on the new entry, and about a million on the student center, so as the first, as the first approximation, could we say it's going to be somewhere around 3.2 million to add that back in? Or am I, or am I misstating?
Well, I guess I understood the question a little differently. I understood that the question was if we, you know, looking at the green, yellow shaded area on the plan you have, if we just didn't do the band room, and I would assume we wouldn't do the practice rooms as well, and really just sort of had the entry space and the student center area, what would that be? It is a scaled-down version from what was, you know, originally designed, so... Most of the money, I can tell you, is in the band room, right? The band room is a large space, it's about 2,000 square feet by itself, and, but that combined with the practice rooms make up, I would, you know, guess, more than half, just looking at it, of that space. So, I would hate to throw a number out, I guess, just on the fly, but it would be a significant savings if we didn't do that.
Okay, thank you. Kristen, you wanted to...
Yeah, actually, I wanted to ask about the band room, because it's a significant cut, and those of us who are not on the facilities committee haven't really actually heard any of the details of the discussion of how the plan got cut down. I mean, I kind of like what you're saying in terms of doing the new construction, and then doing the renovations later, I mean, leaving the room for that. But, the band room is, the, the whole band area and the entryway in the high school is very troubling to me, that it's been shrunk so severely, which actually is, I mean, I would guess that between the cafeteria and the band room, probably most of the voters voted for the bond issue for those two reasons. So, I'm troubled that, and this is also a question for facilities, you know, like, how realistic is it that we're ever going to get any money again to do something significant? This seems like almost a waste of time, because I don't, I mean, the student center, the new entrance, is pretty necessary, and it doesn't look like there's a lot of improvement on what's there already. So, could you walk us through the square footage? Because the, the footprint is, is probably about one quarter of what the original plan was in March, that went to the voters. So, I don't really see practice rooms, I see maybe a couple tiny little rooms, I don't see any additional storage. And, the student center looks very small, so, maybe you could... Pardon?
So how many students?
Yeah, how many students can actually get in the student center? How many students can be in the band room? How functional is it for storage? What are the improvements of the entryway for the high school in general, which, you know, desperately needs improvement there? So, those are my concerns. And, how likely is it that this plan that you have here can actually be expanded in future? Because it looks pretty discreet, how it's put together.
Yeah, so we, we met with Ian and the band people, and they're actually really happy with this plan. Yeah, of course, we'd love to build the original plan, but it was around $7 million for just that one addition, so, you know, we had to look at saving everywhere we could, and still create functional spaces. So we thought this was a good compromise, to get all the pieces and have them be functional. Yeah, they're not as spacious as they might have been, but we think they're still perfectly functional. So the band is sized for, you know, 80 band members, and has all instrument storage in the band space, has three practice rooms, including the band office, which serves as a practice room also. And, student center, its seats about 25 kids, and seats and tables. So it's, it's a pretty nice waiting area, and nice to hang out, at the front of the building. Yeah, it's not, you know, the size of two classrooms, but it's, it's a pretty efficient space, very efficient space, in terms of, we're using kind of connector space that we had that anyhow for the band room, as student center space. And then, the, the security of the main entrance, that's basically exactly like it was before, the functionality of that's the same. We have an office that monitors the doors. Will let people in, still monitor the whole front of the building, and the lobby area. The same buzz-in configuration is the same, so that's really no different than the original plan, in terms of functionality. So I think overall, if you talk to people in high school, I think they're, they're really happy that we're even proposing getting this addition, as opposed to maybe not. So I don't think they had any complaints, so, and you were there, we talked about, what was your impression of that?
I definitely think that there is a sense of...
I'll come back to your question.
Feeling positive that the components that were key to them were being included into the concept.
Joanne, close to the microphone, please.
We weren't quite sure what we were able to fit with the amount that we were asked to cut. So, we also met with Jack on the Hanover Street side, and then met back with both Ian and Jack, just, was that last week, or the week before, to review it? So, the picture that, you know, is in this design, does make everything look super tiny. I think it's different when we walked through it, and kind of had an idea of the space. I think, Paul, the square foot size of the band space, you mentioned it's similar to what other districts have too, or something along those lines? I can't quite remember.
Yeah, so, the Mascomas band room that we just built a few years back, was about 1,700 square feet, and this is about 2,000 square feet, so it's actually, it's bigger than that space. It's a good-sized band room. It's not like we cut it back to a point where it's not functional by any stretch, and it's still a very good band room.
Before we go back, go ahead.
I might just add, too, that I don't think was mentioned, this, this entry does solve some of your handicap accessibility challenges to it, that main entrance, so there's ramps included, so you can really just have one main entrance for all of your students and visitors.
Before we get back to Kristen, there's just one point I want to clarify. Finance, I sat in on the last finance and facilities committee meeting, and that committee doesn't have any more information than anyone else has tonight, so, you know, we're, we're all, we're all hearing the same information at this point. This was the, the plan that was presented to FNF, exactly as it was, what was it, a week ago? Week and a half ago? Yeah.
But we asked for this detail that we're getting today, that we're asking for today, we asked for that detail today to be available, so...
Yep, and that's why we're getting it. All right, Kristen.
I'll keep my follow-up short. I just wondered about the, you know, the student center is very small, I mean, 25 students is pretty small for 650 student, student bodies, so, and it doesn't look like it can be expanded at all. I wonder if you could address my question about how would you see, if there is some money in the budget, and we prioritize the band area, or the entranceway, or the student center, how would you foresee adding on to that? Because it looks pretty contained within the structure as designed.
Yes, that's true. What we were referring to about adding scope of work was more taking on more renovations at Hanover Street, not expanding the three additions, the new, the new construction. Making the student center a little bit larger is not that difficult to do right now, but you would have to decide very quickly if you want to do that. Just because, I don't know, if we talked about the schedule, Preston said we need, we do need to bid this project in January, and that's, there's just three months between now and then to basically design the whole project. We've started, we're, we're making progress towards that, but there are engineers working on this full scheme ahead to get this done in time for bidding. We really do need to settle on what the project's going to be like, like, right away, which I know is unfortunate, but it's, it's taken so long to get to this point, just because we've got to do so many iterations with all the budget struggles, a few different rounds of estimating, changing the plan, estimating some more, adjusting, getting them staffed. So it's, it's a long road to get to this point, and now we're getting to the point where we need to really start to make the construction documents to move ahead, so we can't, if you want, if the student center is very valuable to make that bigger, yeah, I mean, that can certainly be done, it's not a huge deal. If you want to make it, you know, 30% bigger, that's, that's not that difficult to do, but we do need to decide pretty soon if you want to do that.
And, just to kind of try to focus things a little bit, we've got, what, 14.3 million dollars to spend, okay? So, depending, depending where people, people's priorities are, just as an example, if the, if some of the band room or the student center is restored, it's going to be at the cost of something in the Hanover Street side, right? Or, if the, some of the proposed blue renovations are going to be done, because we've been saying for a long time, those are critical renovations, then, I forget who it was, made the point earlier, it's going to be at the expense of the, of the, of the band space. I mean, this, you can only get five pounds of sugar out of a five-pound bag, right?
That's exactly right. That's what we're up against with everything in this project. We've really cut everything down to the, to the very minimum, and made everything as efficient as possible to get the most value out of it. So that's, that's what we've been working on for the last two or three months, yeah.
Can I ask?
Sure.
So, Paul, I know in some of our initial discussions about the renovation projects, there were second floors to, like, especially the main entrances. So, my understanding, or my recollection, is like, at the high school, so if we're, if we're basically reducing the band room space to a functional space, but it's not really what... the band room space to a functional space, but it's not really what we want ideally, I wonder if we're sort of limiting, if we should be thinking about these projects as like a phased project, like we've discussed before, and maybe at this point forego, like, the music room. But would we be able to, if we do a front entrance renovation at the high school with the band room sort of on that second floor, would we be able to expand and create a functional space out of the space that is already existing enough to buy us time until we can really do a real music wing that would support our programs? Like, do we have any, any sense of what that might cost?
I'm not exactly following what you're suggesting. So if we don't have a second floor anymore in any, any part of these additions.
Right. I, right. I know that we took them out a long time ago, but I'm wondering if we considered that as a possibility, could we create a functional band space on that second floor where the band space already exists by creating a second floor to that front entrance addition? For
I don't, I don't think so. Trying to picture what you're saying. Nothing's going to be less expensive than what we're doing now in terms of getting a band room. We looked at somehow improving the old band room. That didn't seem very functional. There's really no way to put anything up above that area that I can imagine to be blocking in three classrooms, windows. And it's pretty expensive trying to build something like that on a second floor, especially a big room, just because of fire code, egress issues. It's really difficult. A band room, basically, I really want to be on the ground floor if possible.
I have a, I have a question. And I guess this is for, it might be for Preston and Paul, so hang on, but it might be just for the board. I'm wondering about the Hanover Street, the four classroom addition versus the blue sections, not the stage, but the other blue sections of renovating the student support services and the nurses station and all these things that seem were high on our priority list all along. And when we have had not expanding enrollment necessarily, is adding the four classrooms the better choice? And I understand, I think, Paul, you mentioned that it makes sense because it gives those places somewhere to go when the renovations are happening, those students somewhere to go. But I also don't know that adding classrooms, that we will then have to convert into student service spaces, which is essentially what we'll end up doing, makes sense. So I just, I guess that's my question for, for the board. Is this, is adding classroom space our priority, or is making the student services renovations here our priority?
If I can just interject, it's not exactly like that. We wouldn't be building these classrooms that can bring them into student services. What, what happens is, Jack needs a certain amount of space in his building to do the program he wanted to do. So if you look at the plan with all the blue shaded areas, he, he would like to have all those spaces for all those functions. If we build the four classrooms, that will give him space in the old part of the building to create those, those spaces he wanted. They just won't be renovated into the ideal configuration for that. But for instance, if we move four class, four regular classrooms to add up the old building into this addition, he'll have to think about all the space he'll have in the building then that he can use for special services, for conference rooms, for staff room. He'll have that space still in the building. It just won't be renovated space, but he'll have that square footage. So he should, in theory, be able to do the same program, more or less, that he would do if we did this full project. The spaces that he'll have some people in won't be renovated space, but he'll still have that space. And he will have classrooms for the new classroom addition. Those will be classrooms. It's just old parts of the building then can expand. So for example, I'm not saying he'll do this, but the office could expand that Jason classroom and use part of that as a conference room and use the rest of it as a staff room or something like. He'll have that space to work with. They're not going to be empty rooms in the building. He's going to use that for the services, special services, staff spaces, everything else that he wanted. They just won't be renovated. So that's why we thought, as long as we build it in square footage, he'll have the space to work with. They just won't be quite as efficient as it might have been, but he'll have the space to work with.
I think I see Jack as an attendee. Hey, Jack? I see Jack. I'm hoping that's Jack Finley. It is? Great. Did you want to talk a little bit about the conversations that we've had and your vision for how this renovation project would work, please?
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you very, very much for inviting me. And I appreciate that you, including me on this. Sorry I couldn't be there in person. But that's exactly right. If, if I can get the square footage, then that's what I'm going to prioritize because then at least I'll have additional space to be able to work and integrate the plan. Obviously, the goal would be to have everything, but being realistic, that's not, that's not an option at this time until we get some of those other bids. But if I can have additional square footage, then we'll work whatever we can to make it useful space and also break up some of the other spaces that are, have three or four staff members in there right now. So if I can get the square footage, that's what, that's what I want to prioritize so I can make up space elsewhere.
Go ahead, Wendy.
So what happens, so if part of the reason that we're saying we need new classrooms, what happens when we actually do need those new classrooms if, I mean,
With all the new apartments and
Then we're sort of back to where we are currently. It sort of doesn't, and, and I guess the other question to maybe Finance and Facilities or whomever made these decisions, I guess I'm a little bit lost in understanding how we prioritize. I think that everything that we've had in the original plans, I, I support it, and I feel like those are needs versus wants, definitely. But if I'm being asked to think about the different components, I don't know that I support currently taking $2 million or whatever it would be in creating a music room over the needs that exist at Hanover Street. I think it feels like we keep putting off Hanover Street renovations, and I'm very concerned about the way we're sort of thinking about these spaces.
Well, before there's a response, just again, this plan was not made by Finance and Facilities. This is an architect's plan that Finance and Facilities saw for the first time last week.
Oh.
This is not, this is not, this is not a board creation.
Correct. This is, this is looking at the key things that were put forward to the community and how, how much things cost and where could they shave money from that made the most sense. I would say if people haven't visited the Hanover Street in a while, the room design is very different. I mean, one, one example is that, if you remember upstairs, there was a, a room dedicated just to technology and devices. That room is now devoted to student services. And the person who was in the position, the para that supports technology, is in a small office. Because we're actually pushing into the classrooms to use technology rather than having kids be pulled out and have a separate class. So some, and Jack, I'm hopping in because I think it's hard when you're on Zoom to kind of know what, what's happening within the meeting. It's just hard. But perhaps you can talk a bit about how you've since co-bid moved things around to better support and what your vision is. When we came to talk about potentially, if there's additional funding, the walls here that are above the classrooms to the right are areas that exist. We talked about renovating them by knocking down some walls and things like that. That was a savings that we think we might be able to come back and still do, but it didn't make sense to put in knocking down walls compared to adding classrooms and a cafeteria or something along those lines. So maybe you could give a brief overview of how Hanover Street's functioning now and how this might look?
Yeah, yeah, that's right. Because, I mean, the, what we're going to do is try to centralize all the student services. So our Ks and Ones can access it, and we're going to have everything in that middle hallway. And then Two and part of Three was going to be in the other hallway. And then Fourth Grade Room remained upstairs. Because we're trying to make sure that we're, that kindergartners and first graders don't necessarily have to go upstairs for specific services. So that's why we are having actual services waiting. If we are able to have these additional four classrooms, I can still make some shifts in the, the current layout. I mean, obviously, there may have to be, I'll have to be a little bit more creative with providing the useful spaces for those people to be, have useful spaces in that, in that centralized location in the middle. But if we're able to put those four classrooms at the additional end of that third grade way, then I can relocate some of the other services. I can have speech and language in their own dedicated place so they can actually facilitate construction without interruption of other services being conducted in that space. Same thing with ELL as well as special education. Instead of having three in one room, I'll be able to break it up. So the services that they are providing is clear, and we're getting a true representation of what the students are, are, are able to understand and comprehend without distraction from multiple services being offered in one space. So that's why we're trying to make sure that at least that those four classrooms are, are going to be included. And then maybe be able to do some internal projects after this and maybe work on some of those other things with other funds in the future.
Can I just ask one clarification, Jack? So if, if the, for classrooms, so if what you're saying is, is having the four classrooms allows you to change up what you're doing to essentially cover the blue spaces, I mean, so it's like, if I added correctly, it's about $2 million to do the blue spaces, and it's about two and a quarter to do the additional classrooms. So I guess the question is, would it not, if you're, if the blue spaces are designed such to meet the needs of the services that you think need to happen at Hanover Street, like, why do we need the new classrooms at this point?
Because we, we are, obviously, I think I could still be able to, with the additional, additional creation of those four classrooms, I can bring down and not have students have services on that second floor. Because obviously, I know that they are doing the minimum state standards, but what we need is to have services on, on the first floor as a priority. And I'm going to need additional space, not just to be short sighted in the next two, three years, but eventually down the road, we may have to transition those spaces into full classrooms. So I, I mean, obviously, level is expanding, and we're, we're hoping that this project is going to be able to suffice the immediate future, should we have needs arise within the next 10, 15, 20 years.
But if we need those spaces as classrooms again, what, then we create the same problem that we have? Or am I misunderstanding?
Jack, can I jump in for a second maybe?
Yeah.
For the last two or three years, we've been looking at this Hanover Street layout, and we've always said that we need, we need those four classrooms in order to do the blue renovations. We can't do the blue renovations without those classrooms because you'll be short on regular classrooms then. We need those four in order to have the four classrooms per grade, which you're going to be, you need now, and will definitely be in the next 10 years. So I don't think it's possible to just do the blue renovations and not do the four classrooms because you'll be, you'll be really short on regular classrooms.
Yes, thank you. I apologize. Yes, that's much clearer than that.
Go ahead, Aaron.
So I think it's important that we have these conversations and we, as a board, make these decisions on how we're going to do these renovations. I also think it's important to think about the band room you're not going to do as an end-of-year fund project, the four classrooms you're not going to do as an end-of-year project, the cafeteria you're not going to do as an end-of-room, end-of-year project. However, some of these blue spaces you could pick in, you could pick at and do a little at a time over the course of a few years, and eventually get to the whole project if that's what we decided, decide to do later on.
So as was, as was mentioned a few minutes ago, we need to, we need to find a path forward tonight in some way, shape, or form if any project is going to go to bid in January. And at the risk of oversimplifying, I guess what we're looking at is what was in front of us here, where we have a certain amount of work that's done on three priorities and other important priorities, the possibility of doing other important priorities, as Aaron just mentioned, with end-of-year funds or when the capital, capital improvement fund is refunded down the road. Or the alternatives that I've heard is essentially to scrap the high school work in the interest of doing the Hanover Street work, or reverse, scrap the Hanover Street work in the interest of restoring the larger band room and Student Center that the high school originally asked for. That's how it seems to me. And, and I think we need to identify one of those three paths forward or something, or some hybrid before we leave tonight so that these guys can do their job.
Can I say one thing?
Yeah, go ahead, Tim.
I just want to, so I reread the Warren article regarding the bond in March. It specifically references construction projects and, and construction projects of both Hanover Street and High School. And so that's what the voters voted on. So I don't, I was going to, I didn't get ahold of a lawyer, but, and I will if you want me to, but doing one building and not the other, I don't think that meets the, the meaning of the Warren article that the voters voted on because they voted on work in both buildings. And if it's helpful for the timeframe, the, the bond money is in the bank. When you, when you fill out an application, they ask you if you're going to start work within six months. And I asked the attorney, what if I don't want to answer yes? And he said, you have to answer yes. So work, you know, means, work is meant by, is that standard is met by paying marinades for the, for the work they do for the bid documents. But my point is, the money is in the bank based on the voters in March. And I don't want to sound like I'm turning the screws, but there's, there's not a lot of time to delay or legal way to delay. The money needs to be spent on both projects. And it needs to, it can only be 14, 3, 41 unless, you know, your options are put money in the budget or put it down the warrant. But 14, 3, 41 will be, will be spent, and it will be spent starting December.
And if it's not spent?
I don't want to know. I don't, we're breaking the law, I guess. I don't know what the consequences are, but that's not good.
No, no mechanism for giving it back?
No, there's, no, you can't give it back.
Okay, just clarifying.
There's no prepayment for, the different issue, but bonds are, are set. They're not prepaying. They're not, hey, sorry, I don't want it. The money is authorized and it's in the bank, and we're making the payments for the next 20 years.
This is one of the more difficult deliberations that this board has ever had. I mean, this situation stinks. There's no question about it. I mean, we went to a lot of work over several years to construct something that was palatable to the voters. And then COVID came along, and, and now the, the costs mean, the costs have come out in a way that, that nobody would have anticipated.
So Joanne, did, did Ian and his crew see this change to the high school?
Absolutely.
And they do enthusiastically support it?
Absolutely. They didn't think they were going to get a, a band space. They're going to have a usable band space. As Paul mentioned, it's larger than some of the other districts. They were pleasantly pleased that we're going to have the openness. And as you can see from the, the 3D, actually having a space that separates and looks like an entrance for the high school, that's never really happened. You're never You're never quite sure where to go in. If you look at the band 3D, there's a lot of light coming into that space. If you look at the front entrance, there's a lot of light. We've been talking about accessibility for nine years. It was actually part, which is going to be coming up in the next year or two, the, what's the National Schools Review that they do every couple of years? NIASK. It's every year, and he asks, asks about the accessibility. So right now, our students sit on red old rubber stairs that aren't accessible. When it's cold outside, they're packed in there. I don't see 25 students necessarily hanging out. They also like to be at the library. So it's a nice space where there could be tables, chairs, like high, not bars, not the right word to use at the high school level, bistro tables, and a lot of light. And it's just a space for kids to be. So would they, would we have all wanted what we had? Absolutely. And I walked over with Paul and Margaret and Ian after the last construction meeting, and met with the band teacher, who's really excited about having the space and how they can use the space. They talked about storage, right down to where the electric guitars are going to be. I mean, this isn't something that they've just made this concept out in the universe. It's very much specific to our schools, you know, talking about where things are going to be stored, also the use of now being able to open up chorus and being able to have that. So yes, I mean, Ian was generally relieved. Jack, you were there when we met with you and Ian at the high school. I think you both saw that it was trying to problem solve. I mean, when we look at Mount Leb, we made difficult decisions and cut millions of dollars there, too. There's not going to be a front entrance at Mount Leb. We had to be creative about putting the cooking kitchen in the front and the multipurpose, you know, room behind. And so, as Richard said, we were certainly not hoping to have this conversation, but I think that this design does represent what the community voted for, which is a band space, the entrances, the cafeteria, the additional classroom spaces. And we'll have to see where we land as far as where the bids come in and where the actual costs are. This in no way is saying that these aren't important things to do, but I think I walked in on the end of, Aaron, you're saying you have, you have to start somewhere with the bigger pieces, and then be able to do the smaller projects down the line, or if there's any extra funding at all. So yes. And Jack, am I representing the conversation the way that you heard it as well when we all met a week or so ago? I don't want to forget anything.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, you said, you said that we didn't anticipate being in this position, and I mean, it's, it is what it is, and we're trying to make student-centered decisions with the handling of it.
Let's, let's see where we are.
I just have one quick question before we see that. Can I just ask? I noticed when we did the detailed budget, we went around and said that the Hanover Street School entrance was about $68,000, if I recall, if that's correct, Preston? Am I remembering?
Yeah, the fishbowl.
Right. So, and I noticed that the Secure Action of Education grant list just came out, and Lebanon, for safe schools, and Lebanon's not on that, and some school districts got $100,000.
We put in, and we weren't approved.
We weren't approved?
Well, we were approved, but we were ranked lower. So we had a low ranking. I double-checked on that.
Okay.
So I put the grant in and the request in, but I might huck them out on the list, and they, they just said that.
Okay.
Try.
Right. And there's another round coming, maybe we'll be on that, but it's not from lack of trying.
Okay, good. I just wanted to check on that.
Sure. That's a good question.
Yeah.
Dick, can I just, so I thoroughly appreciate time is of the essence and the desire to have a decision, but what I'm also hearing is that we're going to talk about the FIP. What makes me really uncomfortable is we have no plan for these other spaces, and if we're going to talk about the FIP, I would feel much more comfortable supporting sort of the plan that's in front of us if we have a ranking and prioritization of these other spaces at Hanover Street School. I'm very concerned that we'll just sort of just keep kicking these things down the road, and it's not going to get any easier or less expensive, and so I would like to see these incorporated into our FIP and agreement by the board around that before saying, yes, I can, I can get on board with what's being presented tonight.
I mean, I guess that would also depend on what else is in the FIP, if there may be some other things there that are higher priority. Until we all look at that, I don't know that we can all commit to that.
Right. So that's why I'm wondering if we can delay making a decision tonight and think about these things a little bit more holistically. So we have.
I don't, I know it sounds like I'm turning, turning the screws, I don't mean to, but delaying, delaying, delaying is not good. If you want to put them on the FIP, we can put them on the FIP, and then you can rank them. But I don't know why you need to wait for a discussion of the FIP before you vote on this. You can, you could make a motion to put the things that are not here on the FIP, and then you can hash it out as to where there's need to rank on the FIP at a later date versus delaying the whole decision until you talk about the FIP. Because all it's going to do is, is miss that, the January window. I mean, missing that January window is bad.
So we don't have two weeks?
I don't know why you need two weeks.
I would argue we're going to have the same discussion two weeks from now. We can argue about this plan, and we can argue about the FIP, but tying the two together, I think Aaron made, made the point, and other people have made it as well, that if these other renovations are going to be done, we know it's going to be a multi-year project, you know, and so any decision we would make about the FIP would be for the coming year only, right? And we know that's going to be tight. We already know that's going to be tight. Go ahead, Steve.
So I guess my, my sense is, listen, this isn't ideal, and it's not everything that we had prioritized and hoped that we would get, but it seems to me, at least, that knocking off the big-ticket items and having the ability to phase in other projects over the coming years makes sense. And I think this plan allows for that. And it doesn't mean that the things that we can't do today aren't important. They're very important, but I think this allows a path forward to get to those things. So with that in mind, I would move that we approve this plan, described as LHS and HSS key plan comparisons dated September 6, 2022, to move forward.
Move by Stephen, second by Aaron. Is there further discussion? I think we've discussed it at length, but if anyone wants to have some last words, we'll spend a couple minutes doing that.
Sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just one, one quick thing. I think it's important when we go forward discussing this, we've talked several times about the eliminated work as being postponed versus eliminated, right? That if we have money, then we'll do this, and I think it's important that we be realistic. Does anyone actually think that the, the work in blue, based on our current cost and construction cost and all of this, that this is actually something that could be afforded in this round with this bond? Or is that something that we're saying to make ourselves feel better, that it could potentially happen? Because it feels like if we're this far above budget already, no matter how many contingency plans we're putting in, and how much contingency money we're putting in, this is what we're doing, and maybe not even this, right? So depending on how these bids come back. So I, I think I want us to be, like, clear-eyed about what it is that we're agreeing to, and what it is that we're not agreeing to, and not saying, well, maybe, possibly, we can do these things, because I don't know if maybe, possibly is realistic at all.
Anyone else? We're going to call the question. All in favor of, of the motion to approve this plan as, as presented, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, opposed, one. The motion passes. Thank you. Is there, are there any other, any other details or housekeeping we need to do before we move on?
Thank you, Preston, Paul, and Margaret for being here.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Jack, as well.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, discussion, $1,200 donation from the Byrne Foundation for the Hanover Street School Four Winds program. Joanne, do you want to address this?
We are very grateful for the continued support of the Byrne Foundation, and for all of the people who are part of Four Winds. We really appreciate it.
And just for clarification, we have not yet adopted KCD, so the board does not need to approve this. We just are still acknowledging it, is that correct?
That's, that's correct. $1,200, under $5,000, just as an acknowledgement.
Okay. Okay, it is acknowledged, and thanks to the Byrne Foundation. Discussion and action, approve the donation of $7,723.10 from BAM for district book drive for students. What's BAM?
Books-A-Million.
Oh, Books-A-Million, of course.
So, can I have a point of order?
A please.
I apologize for not noticing it, but this is over $5,000. We would need a public hearing.
It's up top on the agenda.
Oh, well, we didn't do it tonight.
And we didn't do it.
Because we are so walking. We can bring it back the next time, because we want to make sure. Do you have to do a public hearing at the beginning of a meeting, since it's posted?
Well, it's posted.
I don't know, but I think.
We'll just bring it back.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good, I apologize for that. That just.
I understood as well. As soon as you said that, I'm like, we added that in.
All right, we will defer that until the next meeting.
Okay.
I apologize.
We are appreciative of the donation, though, and we will bring it back.
Donation of $500 donation, donation from Geicon for the high school science olympiad expenses. Again, acknowledge it with, with gratitude. Thank you very much to Geicon. Unfinished business, we have a first reading of policy DFGA. Just to refresh everyone's memory, this was not among the policies that we did a first reading on at the last board meeting, because Policy Committee had voted not to adopt this optional policy. When this was mentioned, there was some concerns that perhaps we should, we should have a first read, and so it's on the agenda today. We would not vote, as always with a first read, we would not vote to accept the policy today, but it, it did seem like it ought to be made available to the entire board for discussion and comment, so let's do that now. Policy DFGA. And this was a, a rather, again, more, more background, as I mentioned last time, a rather lengthy policy from School Board Association, laying out all the various constraints and procedures associated with, with crowdfunding. And the Policy Committee's feeling, when we reviewed it based on input from the administration, was that this was, would impose, and don't let me speak for the BA and the superintendent, but I sensed that it would impose a, an unreasonable oversight burden, and for other, other reasons around things, such as the ultimate source of funds that could come in through crowdfunding. We, we didn't want to adopt this.
Yeah, I would think that was inaccurate portrayal of what I was saying. So if we're going to do it, we need a policy. I don't, for an administrative standpoint, and the, sort of another thing to watch over, I don't know if the cost is worth the benefit, and I don't, I would recommend to the board, from my opinion. I don't really know why we need to allow crowdfunding. We have, the board is very generous in making sure the budget is complete. One thing I wanted to mention from the discussion from the last board meeting, and I want to make sure we're clear on, is these policies cover only the school district official stuff. So if you're a school district adjacent sort of organization, like a PTO, or even the Friends at Lebanon Track, those are not school board things, and so if a PTO, for example, is crowdfunding thing, that has nothing to do with us. So this would be, the crowdfunding we're talking about is stuff that is only governed by the school board itself. And again, to that point, I would prefer if we don't do it, if we do do it, if you guys want us to do it, then we'll make sure that we have as good a policies in place as we can.
So I have a question. So, for example, I can imagine that kids who are going abroad might want to do fundraising, and crowdfunding would be a very good and fast way of making a bunch of money to do that. Can you tell me why, like, what kinds of concerns you have if they were going to do that, or?
I think, I think Dick did a good job of outlining the two main concerns, I think, that come to my mind. One is, you know, this policy does allow for a specific list of sites you can go to, and it actually says if the administration doesn't think there's any good, any good sites, then it can't have crowdfunding. So there's that out. So it has to be, so say we have a list of a few sites you can use, the kids, people have to use those sites. And secondly, the, secondly, and probably more importantly, is the anonymity of who's giving money is a concerning thing to me. So pick your radical group or radical person, you don't even know it, and then comes out that you took money from so-and-so who believes in such-and-such racist thing, or whatever you want to say. You know, the potentiality that, like, the anonymity of it, and the, and the wide sort of ranging net of it is, I think it's a potential for, for an issue. I don't know. I don't, I have not been inundated with people saying that we're having an inability to raise the money that we need to raise through student activity funds, or whatever they need to do. I've had a couple people ask me if they could do crowdfunding for specific things, and we said no, and they've done something that's not crowdfunding, that's approved. So I get your, I mean, it's a good question.
Go ahead, Stephen. I guess what, the clarification, I think I need is, if the district has a policy that says no crowdfunding, but an individual student who is planning to go on a trip abroad wants to do his own fundraising to support his own participation, they would be allowed to, is that correct?
They would, but the soccer club couldn't do crowdfunding. But Joe, if my, my daughter wants to go on that grease trip, if she wanted to do crowdfunding on her own and give money to pay for the trip, then that would be allowed. Because we wouldn't know about it.
So, did you just say, like, if the soccer team wanted something, they couldn't do crowdfunding?
Right. The soccer team is an approved organization of the school board, and so this kind of thing would prevent crowdfunding for that. Correct? They could do all kinds of fundraisers that they do now, including selling candy bars or whatever they sell. And people pay online for that stuff. It's not that that's crowdfunding, you know, it's the anonymity of a, hey, we're going on a trip, can I get money? That's what would not be allowed if we didn't have crowdfunding.
So is there a way to make a, like, a prophylactic use of crowdfunding, where they would have to come to the board and request permission to do it?
That's what this policy is.
I think that's what it says.
So if, if they, if we had that policy, then why would we not want to allow it in its entirety? Because I think that one of the things that, for me, anyway, when I hear this, is that this is a new technology that people are using, and we need to, instead of saying no to the new technology, we need to do what we can to make it safe for the kids and all of that stuff. I guess I'm trying to figure out a way that we could both say yes and have a good filter for it, or?
And I, I mean, I, I didn't write this policy. I think this policy attempts to do that. You know, in the scenario that Stephen's granted, where so-and-so was raising money for his own trip, that still wouldn't come to the board. So, yeah, there is an attempt. You go to the, according to this policy, you go to the principal, and after the principal approves it, it goes to superintendent, and then the board would be only approving things above $500. That's the, that's what's laid out in this, this DFGA.
Can I just jump in, because we did have a long discussion about this in the policy meeting, that this doesn't disallow donations. It also doesn't disallow fundraising. It also doesn't disallow fundraising on the part of teams or choral groups or anything. So the only thing it disallows is anonymous sites for collecting money, so.
But you can crowdfund and, and make the filter where they can't give anonymously. I mean, that's what I'm saying.
Well, I understand there's, there's workarounds, but I think the fundamental point is it would be a management issue, like Tim or somebody would have to manage what's approved as a site. It would be, you know, if somebody wants to give money to the soccer team, there are lots of mechanisms to do that, and they can also pay online, I would imagine. I mean, they can pay electronically. So it's, it's only the issue of crowdfunding and kind of whatever. I'm not very savvy on all this stuff either.
But there's no place for them to donate on.
It really doesn't, I mean, people can give as much money as they want to the school board, to the school system for, and they can earmark it.
I see.
Easily. I mean, we get these donations every single school board meeting. We do have a new policy about how things have to be funneled more through the superintendent and through the board. We've changed the dollar amounts according to the New Hampshire School Board Association just to keep it a little bit more equitable amongst the, the school buildings, but, so I guess the point is this adds an extra administrative burden. It doesn't seem necessary because there are lots of ways to give money to the school and, and programs privately, and we are happy to accept any money that comes from anybody. But if individuals want to raise money for their own purposes, then, you know, that's completely outside of our purview. So it feels like a policy, we talked about it in policy meeting with Tim's input and Joanne as well, that it feels like a policy that we don't really need, and to take it on requires extra work on the part of the district.
The only thing I would, the only caveat to that, I would say, I appreciate that, and I think you summarized that well. We, we either need a crowdfunding policy or a statement that says, this is my opinion in reading auditors' reports for the last two years, we either need a crowdfunding policy or a statement in our donation policy that says crowdfunding is not allowed, because it's a big enough issue that the auditors are looking at it every year. So I'm not saying you should just ignore the issue and not have a policy. I, I was asked, do you think we need crowdfunding? And I don't really think we need it. But if you guys want it, then we need to have a policy like this.
So, sorry. So this policy, the way that it's stated, is only disallowing crowdfunding by employees of the district, right? That's as I read it. I mean, it says the board, I mean, if you look at it, it's talking about, we're not allowing employees of the district to use crowdfunding unregulated. That's in, like, the second paragraph. The board further recognizes, however, that unrelated employee, unregulated employee use of crowdfunding campaigns on the behalf of the district can subject both the district and its employees to significant potential legal liability. So it's saying this funding, this policy is, is mandating or regulating the use of crowdfunding by employees of the district only. So.
Or students.
No, it only says employees, that's what I'm saying.
Students can only participate in an employee's campaign. It's in the paragraph, second paragraph, under B. Students are permitted to participate in publicizing an employee's approved crowdfunding campaign but are prohibited from otherwise engaging in crowdfunding on behalf of the district. So students cannot, according to this policy, set up their own crowdfunding for a school activity.
Right.
But every activity has a, an advisor anyway, so it's sort of a moot point, like, you know, the soccer club has an advisor or coach. So.
Right. So.
So, right, we can, I think I tries to recognize that you can never stop Joe Parent from having a crowdfunding on their own, although I have had to call parents and say, could you please take that down? Because they were crowdfunding for something, they didn't, all he had to do was ask. And it made us look like we weren't providing, but we were. Which is kind of my, part of my issue, is like, it kind of looks like the board, the board isn't approving, isn't paying for something that needs to be paid for, and I don't really like how that looks.
So that's actually my quibble with it, is because it feels like the reason that we're prohibiting it is because we don't want the appearance that we haven't paid for everything, but we know we haven't paid for everything. We can't pay for everything. We often don't pay for many things. You know, see our, our conversation we just had about, about renovations. So it feels like we're going to prohibit it because we don't want the appearance that we can't pay for everything, when the reality is, we can't and we don't. And if someone else can find another funding source, we're saying, we don't want you to do that because we don't want it to look like we can't pay for everything, but we can't.
Well, I know this is, you know, I guess we're not, we're not playing by Robert's rules, and I apologize for that. So I, I think that's a reason, but I also think the board, and crowdfunding or not, the board gets to control what gets done and what gets paid for on this, on this, in this district. So maybe the board isn't paying for it because it's not a priority, or maybe if you have someone who's a really good fundraiser or really prodigious at crowdfunding, and they had their, their child on a particular team or club, so they get all, they get all this money raised. I mean, there's a, there's a level of equality that's not, that, I mean, this, I guess, would prevent that because they still have to come through here. So I'm just saying that there's a lot of reasons why just letting people crowdfunding needs to be very careful. But this would say you can't crowdfund unless the principal and the superintendent approve it, but then, back to the regulatory thing, we're going to have to have a system in place to make sure that stuff is somehow equitably fundraised across the district, which comes in because then we're going to have someone saying, well, it's not my fault that that team or that, or that sport can't raise the money, but our team can, but you're saying I can't because we did it three times last year? So, anyway, I agree with you.
But that's, that's going to have to be the last word for tonight. We're, we've embarked on the process now, and we need to see it through. So this is a first read. There will be, there will be a second read at the next meeting, at which point we'll have an up or down vote on whether or not to accept this policy. Moving on to the second reads. Kristen, do you have the list of?
I have our agenda with the list. Should we?
Dick?
Yes.
If, if we, I think we have to then table KCD because in that policy, if we don't accept the crowdfunding policy, then there, that's where we would make the statement that we don't permit it. So those two are sort of tied together?
You can, you can, when KCD comes up in one more policy, we can vote to table it.
Okay.
If that's, if that's, that's the board's desire. But we, we do need to have a second read of KCD, even if it's, even, even if it's ends in tabling it because of that last line. Okay, so, let me just bear with me for a minute.
Are we just making a motion to approve them with the second read or?
Why don't you make motion, a motion to accept by reading out the policy number and the title? And I have the policy minutes here in front of me, and I can give the, refresh people's memory on the background. So start with BIE, correct?
Sounds good. Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to accept policy BIE, board member indemnification revised.
Second.
Motion by Kristen, second by Stephen. This was first read last time, and basically the revision here is a paragraph has been added stating that the board will not defend or indemnify those who engage in criminal behavior or other inappropriate or illegal actions. Otherwise, the policy is not substantially changed. Lil.
So as always, I have a bunch of grammatical stuff, which I'll hand to Joanne.
That's right.
There are some substantive things too, but not on this one, so.
Okay. Questions? Corrections? All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, zero, accepted.
Okay, make, make a motion to accept the policy KCD, public gifts and donations revised.
So can, are we, can we make a motion first to table it?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Sure.
Well, make your motion first.
Okay. Well, I just did the motion. To accept policy KCD, public gifts, donations revised.
And we need a second. Second by Lil. Now.
Okay. Make a motion to table it? Okay, I would like to make a motion to table policy KCD, public gifts and donations revised, pending further revisions.
I second.
Now, I would suggest that the discussion has already taken place on this, so let's vote on tabling it, please. I believe, I do believe that does require a vote. All in favor of tabling KCD until the next meeting? One, two, three, four, five, six, six, yes. Opposed? One. Lisa, are you voting? Yes or no?
I already voted.
Sorry, I missed, I missed your hand.
Yeah, I voted in support of it.
Seven, one. It's, it's tabled.
Does it come back as a second because it's been tabled, or does it come back as a third because it's its third round?
I don't know. No, it's, it's a second. It's still a second.
Okay, just checking.
Yep.
Okay.
FAA.
All right. Would like to make, make a motion to accept policy FAA, annual facility plan, new.
Second.
Okay, second by Lil. And again, this is, lays out, this is a new policy. It lays out requirements for how a district's facilities plan is to be drafted and adopted, including annual report to the power of education. We already have a facilities plan. Policy committee recommended accepting this with some modifications to grammar and dates, which were already included at the time we did the first read. Lil, do you also have some things to pass on?
This was a really good one. Good job.
Don't thank, thank NHSBA or someone. All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, zero, accepted.
So just a quick question. Will this now go to finance and facilities to review to make sure that we are going to be in compliance with it?
Well, it based, most of the policy says you have to create a facilities improvement plan.
But is it a facilities improvement plan? Because that was my question. I don't know that this is actually talking about facilities improvement plan. This is talking about.
I'm sorry, a facilities plan. My, my mistake.
Right. Because this is just like the buildings that we own and how we're using them, correct?
Yes. Yeah, I misspoke. Sorry.
So do, do we have this plan of the buildings that we own and how we're using them?
Yes, we didn't file on this.
Okay.
Okay. Did we vote on this?
Did we vote on that?
Did we just?
It was eight.
Thank you. Okay. Right, yes. Okay, I, the two that were linked, correct, on homeschool?
Okay, yes. So I'd like to make a motion to accept policy IHBG, home education instruction and access to curricular and co-curricular programs revised, and policy IHBG-R, participation in public school activities by home-educated charter school and other non-public schools, school pupils revised.
I second.
Second by Lil. This was, this was a little bit confusing because two, two documents that essentially deal with the same subject matter have slightly different, actually significantly different titles, but they do all deal with access to curricular and co-curricular programs by, by, by home schooled kids as well as kids in charter schools and non-public students. This is an extensive rewrite to comply with current state law. No significant change to our current practice would be involved. Comments or questions? All in favor? Eight, zero, accepted.
Okay, next one. I would make a motion to accept policy JJJ, access to public, oh, this is a new policy, sorry. Access to public school programs by non-public charter school and home-educated pupils, new.
Second.
Second by Stephen. Are there, are there questions about this? I'm waiting for the ones that you had.
It's only on JCA, not here.
Okay, okay. This basically states our current practice. All in favor? Eight, zero, accepted. JCA.
Okay. I'm making a motion to accept policy JCA, change of class or school assignment, best interests and manifest hardship revised.
Second by Mary. Questions or comments?
I have a couple on this one. So on B2, procedure for determination of manifest educational hardship, so, sorry, B2A. Everybody with me? The first sentence, within 30 days after receipt of the superintendent's written determination described that reassignment is not in a student's best interest as described in paragraph, I think that first describe just needs to go away. That's not, it seems like it's a, so instead it would say, within 30 days after receipt of the superintendent's written determination that reassignment is not in a student's best interest as described in paragraph A to C above, blah, 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 blah. Yep, okay. And then in B4, next page. So the last sentence of that, of B4, if a parent or guardian believes that denial of a reassignment under this policy upon the child's disability, I think we're missing a word there. So I think what we need is something like, if a parent or guardian believes that denial of a reassignment under this policy relies upon, depends upon, concerned, involves the child's disability, the parent or guardian may appeal to the SBOE or file a complaint with the New Hampshire Human Rights Commission.
Would it be is based upon?
Could be. Either, I mean, I don't know what we're missing, but we're missing something because that doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, you're right.
Did this eliminate, did this omission, you think, did we get it that way from NHSBA or is this a transcription error?
No, this is, this is theirs.
This is theirs.
They are, they are not sacrosanct, don't worry. Yeah, so those are the two sort of big wording problems in this one.
Thank you.
Anything else? All in favor of adopting this policy as amended? Eight, zero.
And we probably just need to look at why the underline.
Yeah, I corrected that.
Okay.
The underline is crazy. There's, there's all kinds of spacing problems in these ones, so I just, I've noted all of them.
It's because they're double spacing, like old school typewriting.
I still do that. Angus is like, what are you doing?
Okay, that concludes the second policy reads. As I mentioned, item I is going to be moved to the end of tonight's agenda. We now have committee updates. Before we get into committee updates, we need a non-public. Stephen?
I'd move that we move to non-public meeting under RSA 91A32, section A. I'll second.
Second, and we need our, we need roll call. We'll start with Mary.
Yes.
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 CATV folks, we'll probably be 10 or 15 minutes. Dates, Finance and Facilities Committee.
Recording in progress.
Finance and Facilities Committee, next meeting Thursday, October 27th at 4:00 PM. Aaron, am I right that we've talked out everything that needed to be talked out from afternoon?
Yeah, we talked about that last meeting.
Policy Committee, we've just reviewed those policies. Next meeting is Monday, October 17th at 8:30. EC met September 19th. Is there a report?
Yes, we met September 19th. We went over the report of the summer work and the summer, summer school and summer curriculum work that had happened, which there will be a report on that coming up in a couple of meetings, right, Joanne? I don't know which meeting it's scheduled for, but soon. And we discussed our future topics and our schedule going forward and when the new person will come on and how that will affect our.
will come on and how that will affect our calendar. That's it.
Thank you. Personnel Negotiations Committee, ongoing negotiations. Student Wellness Advisory Committee, next meets Wednesday, October 5th at the SAU. Harvard Area Career Technical Center, next meets November 8th at 9 o'clock AM. Area Committee, Tuesday, October 18th at, at Grantham, 6:00 PM. School District City Task Force, next meeting Thursday, October 20th at 6:00 PM at City Hall. The Track Fundraising Summit Committee is scheduled here for Tuesday, October 18th. I hope it's going to meet sooner than that, and when there's a date, I'll pass that along to the board. But that, those meetings happen here. We've been using the library at 6:00 PM.
Can we just have a quick update? I know I asked him on our way into the non-public. Can we just have a quick update on where the track stands?
So, the, the site work, if you've been out there, you see the site work's all done, the SAD is all put in, and there were, so we finished that actually two weeks early, I think. The track, second part of the contract is putting the surface down, and because of supply issues, he was supposed to start, well, he said he was going to move in the day before the bonfire, so he said, "Can you start on Monday, two days ago?" And he did not, but he said that's because of a lot of rain and other projects. He had a, he spent, he's four days behind in cleaning up, getting that stuff done. So supposedly, he's going to roll in Friday. So, we're, there is a hard deadline on the, in the contract that he needs to finish by, which is, I think it's October 13th or somewhere around the middle of October. So, anyway, if you've been out there, you see it's usable. You can't, you can't, I mean, it's not track usable yet, but the space is open for use.
Is it, is, is this the stage at which we need to have dry weather for a certain period of time for them to put that surface down? Or is that for the underlayment? I don't remember.
I actually asked, actually Dana's kind of still coordinated for me, and I asked him to look at the project documents to see the specs, how many days it needs, and I talked to him about that on Monday, so I can't answer that, but I think you're right. I think you need a couple of days of dry weather, but I haven't read the documents.
We'll see. Future agenda items, board member recommendations or questions? People can, of course, ask to add things at any time, but if there's anything right now to get on future agendas?
I already emailed the principals that didn't come during this meeting to invite them. I also emailed him to invite Stephen, our new director of facilities, to come to that meeting as well.
Thank you, Joanne.
Have we accepted Stephen's nomination?
You've not seen that, I mean, he's not a certified person, so our intent wasn't to bring it to the board, but he starts on Monday.
Okay, important dates. We just went through most of the important dates, district announcements, school board meeting Wednesday, October 12th. Tim, would you like to repeat again when you're thinking of for our big budget meeting in November? We can get it on our calendars.
Yeah, sure, if I can find it.
It's the Saturday before Thanksgiving.
Yeah. I think it's the 17th. Hold on.
The 19th?
19th. But first, we have to meet together the week of October 24, somewhere in that range. So, I would need, I don't, if it's been published, what, who the board reps are, I'll have to find it out.
Yeah, it's on the, it's on the website. And if for some reason it's not, let me know. I'll send you the spreadsheet.
Okay.
Okay, any other business to be brought up? I think you had. Yeah, I know, I have one other. The superintendent search update is going to be the last item unless there's any, any other new business. Okay, well, for the, for the update, I, I just sent out this update this morning. I'm sorry that I didn't have it done in time for the, to be included in the board packet. This is not confidential material. It's publicly available. And I'll just run through it. I'm not going to read this whole thing back to everyone because it's getting rather late for that. But we did have a Zoom meeting on the 22nd with the Bryan Group, call themselves TPG, that has the contract with the Napier School Board Association. I attended it together with, with Stephen, Wendy, Tim Ball also sat in. You've all received a copy of that, of that recording. It was a fairly reasonably short meeting. I think it was less than a half an hour. And I've listed the main points of what they and probably any other search firm would provide, and that's also laid out in much more detail in the proposal that you've all received before. The, the cost for that, their proposal is $15,000 is the base cost plus expenses associated with the, their person, Michelle Munson, traveling to Lebanon, as well as in expenses involved in bringing candidates here who might be coming from a distance and need to stay overnight. If it turns out, and this is something that was, that was brought up in our Zoom meeting, if it turned out that we didn't have a sufficient number of suitable candidates, we would want them to step up their efforts in trying to recruit people who might not be, the so-called passive candidates, who might not be out there responding on school spring or anyplace else. In other words, outside the normal sourcing channels, they have contacts to do that, as does NHSBA and their fellow states in the Northeast, and that would be an additional cost of 3,000 to 5,000. So, that's the, the approximate expenses we're looking at. I included in the report information on other search firms I was able to come up with, and there isn't a one of them that has done any, any work in New Hampshire. This is probably because the Bryan Group works through the School Board Association. I found there were some other states. I think Connecticut was one, and I think Maryland was another one, where all these placements are done through a single recruiter. So, that's probably why they're not, no one else is doing any work in New Hampshire. I think by comparison, this seems like a lot of money, but I think their, their fees are actually somewhat lower than what we would pay some of these, these other firms. And so, I'm recommending, and I'd like the board to approve, if you agree, that we, that we contract with the Bryan Group for our search and a proven expenditure of up to $25,000 for the project. That would be 15,000 for their base and additional 10,000 for these other additional expenses that might come up. I think that would give us sufficient, a sufficient cushion. Hopefully, we won't spend 25,000. But just by way of comparison, you look at some of these other, other firms, and their total retainer is anywhere from a quarter to a half of the individual's annual compensation. So, we could be talking significantly more than this. So, when I'm done here and we discuss this, what I'd like to leave with tonight, in order to keep the, the process moving forward, is to, for the board to, to approve going forward with a contract with them so that we can, we can keep things moving. The, on the search committee, we have guidelines we adopted in 2018 that show the composition of the committee, and I've listed here, I've reached out to some of these people already. Need to have two SAU administrators, two building level principals, two LEA members, two LSS members, one member of the community, an optional student member, and then a minimum of two board members. The SAU directors, as you know, they're in somewhat small a number right now, so I reached out to Tim and to, and to Karen, and they have both agreed to serve on the search committee. I think both of them would be really important since, since Tim has the institutional expertise as well as the financial background, and Karen is our student services person, so they would be important. Building level principals, I went to Ian, who's president of lag, and said, "Who do you recommend?" He recommended Jack and Katie. And so, I'm recommending that we, that we include them. LEA members, I've reached out to the co-presidents of LEA for nominees. Same thing with LSS, haven't heard back from them yet. Community member we need to talk about, the Lebanon High School student, I reached out to Ian for a nomination, and he recommended, I think it's pronounced, Erica, Ararica Narula, who's a junior at Lebanon High School, he thinks very highly of, and he is nominating her. For the board members, what I wanted to do tonight is to invite any of you who are interested in being on the search committee, let me know, and we'll have either three or four members of the board on the search committee. You have to have, have a minimum of two, and I think this committee is, you know, we like big committees in this district, but this is not too, too bad. We'll have either, either three or four, and I'm going to be requesting volunteers for that.
Dick?
Yes.
I just remember when we had the meeting, the, the woman who was part of the TBG group, she commented on the initial sort of time, amount of time that that commitment would require. So, will you share that, just so committee members?
Yes, yeah, yeah, thanks, thanks for, in fact, let me, let me read you what I, what I sent to the individuals. Whoever search should be willing to make a substantial commitment of time to the process. There will be orientation and training sessions with the search firm, collaboration on preferred profiles for prospective applicants, evaluation of applications and related discussions prior to bringing final candidates to the board. Estimate anywhere from 25 to 40 hours of direct work will be involved, and there will be additional time that we'll have, people will have to spend individually looking at resumes and, and things of that nature. So, it's a, a good chunk of time, starting as soon as we possibly can, probably within the next two weeks, and finishing up by the end of February. So, I guess the first thing, I, well, open any, you know, this is questions or, or comments. If there aren't any, I'd like to start with a, with a motion, if we might, to approve the hiring of the Bryan Group. Stephen?
I'd move that this board move forward with a contract with the Bryan Group to support our search for a new superintendent.
Thank you.
I'll second.
And you need to include the-
Second by Lil.
With a maximum expenditure of $25,000 for the project.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any, any questions or debate about that? Hearing none, let's vote. All in favor?
BRYAN.
BRYAN. BRYAN, yep. Eight, eight, zero. The motion passes. What are people's thoughts about recruiting a, a community member? I mean, my, my first, my first impulse was to ask Joanne to send out a solicitation to our school district mailing list, you know, distribution list, and then it occurred to me that if we're interested in, we can only have one, but if we're interested in a broader reach, we could put an ad in the Valley News. What do people think?
Should, should that email communication come from Joanne or should it come from you?
Oh, it'll, it'll come from, it'll come from me.
Yeah.
And it will-
It'll come from the district or from, it'll come from the school board.
But I think we should have a, either your email or a specific superintendent's search email for all of this stuff, right? We need to set up a, an email that is not one of our personal emails, like for the search itself. We've done that before for other, for other things where we have like a specific email dedicated to, email address dedicated to receiving application-
Oh, yeah, 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 sure.
To, but, but also to this, this solicitation of interest from the community, all of that. We have one central address that's going to-
Yep, we can, we can do that. That's probably going to be the most labor intensive. I mean, we'll, we'll have, we'll see. Who knows? Maybe nobody will volunteer.
Is that, is that normal that there's a, I mean, did the Bryan Group suggest that or is that just a normal thing that you have?
It's our, it's our procedure. We adopted in 2018 that we'd have a community member, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just, because I feel like if you throw out an email, I mean, what if you do get like, I don't know, 20 people who want to be on it? How are you gonna, how is, how are you gonna decide?
And it's not you. I mean, it's how are we going to decide, right?
Yeah, or how is you, the collective you, of the rest of the search committee or the board, going to decide?
Well, since this member, this person would be a member of the search committee, it would have to be decided in, in advance.
Right.
I think what I, what I'll do is, if you trust me to do this, I can see who volunteers, make a first cut, share that information around, and see where, see where we, where we end up. At the end of the day, what I want to do is bring to this board a roster of, a roster for the proposed search committee and then have the board approve it. I don't want to get bogged down in having the board decide individual representation. I think, you know, particularly the ones coming from LEA and LSS, I think if they, if they choose to nominate people. I did encourage them, by the way, to nominate more than two because we want to have a good distribution of, of grade levels and building representation. So, you know, if, if they each nominate three or four, then we'd be in, be in a position to make sure that there's someone from elementary levels, different, different buildings and so forth.
Do we know why Ian wouldn't participate as a principal?
He wanted to give Jack, both Jack and Katie were interested in doing it, and Ian said, "Let them have at it." I would have welcomed his participation, but I, I respect his, I respect his decision to give them a chance.
Yeah, I just, I guess I, I worry, my concern would be that there's been a lot of turnover and Ian, like Tim, would just have institutional knowledge that I think is helpful.
Agreed.
Yep.
I also, just on that same point, that would be two building principals, both the elementary, but there wouldn't be any representation from middle school or high school on the community?
That representation would come from teachers in Paris.
Okay.
We'd have to make sure that that, that was adequately balanced. I wasn't anxious to second guess the president of the lag group, and that's why I didn't. I pressed him a little bit, and that's, that was his, that was his nomination. Now, board can reject it when I, when I bring forward the slate.
We can say that we strongly encourage his participation.
I have a question, well, not a question, just a comment about the community member. I, I think I would be okay with you making a cut if we specified in our request that we don't, that we want people to do more than just say, "I'm interested." We'd like them to say why and what experience they have and what their, you know, I mean, to give, I think we have to have like several things we want to see because I think, going back to Kristin's point, it will be impossible to make that decision if we don't have additional information that shows the sort of seriousness of, or their interest in doing this beyond just, I think it's a cool idea, so.
As, as we have, as we did when we fill board positions and track committee, things like that, why do you, you know, why do you want to do this?
Right.
Absolutely.
And do we want somebody in, I think the wonder, the question would be, do we also, are we looking for somebody truly from the community that is not, doesn't have children in the school district so that we get perspective outside of our?
Yeah, I don't know. Have to see who volunteers, and that, and that's why, you know, we have to decide if we want to do something in the Valley News or something in the, in our normal distribution.
But I think we, I think actually we need to make that decision before we solicit volunteers because I think it's important to determine what is it, we've talked about this before when we talked about superintendent evaluation, there are lots of people in the community who have zero interaction with the superintendent at all, right? So, is that who we want to have? Is that the kind of representation we want to have or do we want someone- want someone who does have interaction with the superintendent from the community?
Right.
So I, I'd like, I think we need to make a decision as a board on
Let's do that, let's do that now, because I think that's decided by where we advertise.
Right, that's, it'll determine how we solicit.
Exactly, so I think that's an important thing for us to decide.
So what, what do people think?
I'm in favor of what, I mean, I think I'm reading you that I think it would be more helpful to have input, to have someone on the committee who has an interest in the school, either someone who's a parent, or a grandparent, or a guardian or something, but I don't know if it's helpful to have somebody who's disconnected from the school system, because, you know, it's a pretty serious decision, and hopefully one we don't need to make for another 10 years, but, but yeah, I guess I would like to narrow the pool to people who are serious and know that they have to make a huge time commitment for a certain period of time, and then people who have some knowledge of the school so they can give more input, rather than just be an observer on the committee. So maybe it comes down to the questions that we ask people to reflect on, because there could be community members that don't have any current connection to the school, but are informed citizens, that would be a good
Or had students in the district multiple, you know, for many years, but don't now, so.
Or who will have students in it.
Right.
I think it's, it's certainly, certainly legitimate to direct the solicitation to people who already have a connection with the district, and to ask them why they want to do it. I, I don't want to
We could say
I, I, I don't want to try to filter people according to their specific agendas, because I think that the, the, the search firm, the Nicole's training and orientation is going, is going to be designed to, as much as possible, eliminate any preconceived slants, and get something, get a set of qualifications that, that people agree on, that can have an objective alignment with the applications that come in. Understanding that people, the reason we want to have a large search committee is there's diversity of opinion of what the, what the district needs, but
I think, so I think you could, you could say, you could do both of those things, accomplish that by saying, please comment on your interest, any relevant experience that you have, any information that you think would help us make the decision. I mean, so something like that, where you're, you're not telling them what to, what to say, but you are saying, tell me what your, what your connections are, tell me what you think, tell me why you're interested in this, and, and what your experience is.
But that would mean casting the net outside of direct connection to the school system, is that correct?
Well, that's what I, I don't know, we haven't decided that yet, but I don't, I don't know. I'm, I'm in the favor, I'm of the opinion that casting it within the school district is going to be more useful than outside, just because I feel like they're the people who are going to be most invested in this to begin with, so that's just
I, I tend to agree with you. I mean, just looking at, at, at a much broader issue, we can't people, we can't get people to come to our deliberative session to talk, discuss, and vote on our operating budget, you know, so, yeah. I, I, I would agree with that, unless, unless, unless someone has a strong objection.
There's past board members that might be interested, you know.
But they're still connected.
Right. I don't, I mean, I guess I feel too, that if you're going to have four board members, it sort of covers the base of, I mean, most of us are parents and have interaction with, with kids in the school and, or grandchildren, and, and we have direct interaction with superintendent, and we're sort of caught up. So I don't know that if we cast that net into the same pool of people that we actually get that diversity of opinion, but
Yeah, I think that's a good, I mean, that is a good point. It's a good counterpoint to my argument. I, I, and I don't think we lose anything necessarily by casting a wide net. We, and again, it goes back to what Dick was just saying, if no one from the community writ large applies, then no one from the community writ large applies, so.
I, I think there's going to be a pretty, a pretty good pool of people to pick from, though, among families, people associated with the school district, without getting into former board members or employees or anything like that. There's got to, well, we'll see, but there's got to be people out there who would be willing to, who have not been connected before, but, with the board before, but who are, are interested to, to contribute, that will, that will do it. So let's, let's give that a try, if that's, if that's, if, I don't hear any objection to it. We'll do it within the district first.
In that solicitation, will you put that little preamble of time commitment and expectation?
Absolutely, yep, yep. I'll send you all a copy before it goes out. For this, members of this, of this board, we need a minimum of two. I don't, don't need it tonight, but if you could reach out to me, say sometime in the next few days, and let me know if you're interested?
I think we should decide it tonight. I mean, I think we're all here, right? Like, I think we should, except, well, NJ's not here, so I guess that's the, but if we, if we send it all to you, so if there's nine of us, and eight of us say we're interested, then how do you make that decision? So, right, I don't want to do that, so.
The beauty of it is that you don't have to do that.
No, but I don't want us to do that.
It's not even us. It's not even us. The, 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 the policy says that the chair appoints, appoints the members. So I'm gonna, I'll bite the bullet and do it, but I don't want to appoint people who may not be interested in doing it.
I would be interested.
I'm interested, yeah.
Definitely interested as well.
Okay.
I don't have the time, but I'd like to. I've got Mondays and Thursdays.
Got all the time in the world. I will make the time.
I mean, you might need to have an alternate as well, just in case there are
Possibly. I'd want to consult with, with Nicole Munson about that, and see what she thinks about alternates who might not be present for everything, but yeah.
And just to review, whatever the, whoever the search committee is, whatever the search committee decides, then all of us as board members are supposed to watch the video interviews and read the CVs and all of these things, right? I mean, this is all
I would hope so.
This is all still incumbent upon us to do, whether we're on the search committee or not.
I would, I would, I would hope so. Okay, anything else? This was productive, thank you. Stephen, you're up.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, second, was that a second?
That was a second.
Okay, all in favor? Adjourned. Aaron Judge hit his 61st homerun.